And by the way, Merry Christmas. If you would stand with us, please, for our prayer and our pledge. Bow with me. Our Father, Lord, we're thankful for this day. God, we're so thankful for Christmas and for the meaning of Christmas and for the sacrifices you've made to offer us the opportunity to join you in eternal life. God be with this commission. As we do the business of the county, may we do what is in the best interest of the citizens of this county. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. You may be seated. Call or roll, please, gal.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion. Craig Lynch. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogel. Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush. Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, gal. This time, we need to approve the minutes for April 26 and September 27 meeting. I'll call in our vice chair, Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the minutes, and they seem to be appropriate and have everything that we do need. Mr. Chairman, I move that they be approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve April 26 and September 27 meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Members, we have three items that have been withdrawn tonight. Two items that have been submitted for final plat approval, item number 21-2092 and 21-2094. We also had one that's been withdrawn was a site plan, and that number is 21-3026. Item six on our agenda is new business, and we have three items that were submitted for final plat approval. Items 21, 2092, 5570 Shelbyville Highway subdivision has been withdrawn. Item 6AB, 21-2094. Trotter two-lot subdivision has been withdrawn. Item 6AC, 21-2097, Smith Farms Section 1, 74 lots on 46-plus acres, Zoned PUD located along Blackman Road. Goodall Homes is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, commission members. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the planning commission back in May of 2019. This final plat does conform to that approved preliminary plan and the construction drawings. We did send our comments to the applicant's design, engineering, and surveying team. Those comments have been addressed. This plat is in good order, and we'd recommend approval, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-2097, Smith Farms Section 1. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6B, we have three items that were submitted for site plan approval. Item 6BA, 21-3021, ground-up foundation repair. Construction of 4,800 square feet. Construction, sales, and service building on 54 acres, Zoned PUD located along 3615 Shelbyville Pike. Ground-up builders is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This property, you may recall seeing this in the past, it's been the subject of several conditional use permit requests, most recently back in 2010. This property was rezoned to commercial services when we redid our zoning ordinance and map and adopted that back in 2013. The current applicant would like to sell, well, would like to use this property, excuse me, to have a foundation repair company, which is an allowable use in the commercial services zone. We would consider that under construction, sales, and services. There's a portion of the existing 5,000-square-foot building that would be renovated for an office, and they would also construct a new 4,800-square-foot building to be constructed for business activity, storage, and parking. Parking areas are also shown on the site plan. Mike's got a copy of that up. From a planning and zoning standpoint, our comments have been addressed. However, I know there's a couple of outstanding engineering comments that Mike would like to speak about in a little more detail, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to him for that.
Thank you, Doug. What I would like to say, like Doug had mentioned, mostly the comments have been addressed, and the site plan's in good order. However, there's a few things that we need to work through with the design engineer on the stormwater detention pond. There is an existing house on the front of the property, and they're proposing to put the pond almost right directly behind it. So typically, that's not a good idea. I've been told by the design engineer that there's a tight line for the existing storage building that's already on-site for some bathrooms that they have in there. But I'd like to work with the design engineer about maybe finding a new location for that. I've been a design engineer for several years, and I've witnessed a couple pond burn blowouts. So I always try to get a detention pond away from existing structure if the pond burn were ever to fail. So, you know, all in all, other than that, there's some few things that we need to adjust with calculations, some sizing of a sediment trap, and things like that that we can work through. But like Doug said, most of the comments have been addressed.
South, I think.
I think south. Yeah, I can show you on a map. This parcel right here, a little bit farther south than the Walmart. Turn on the city limits so you can kind of see. This is the new Walmart at Joby Jackson. So it's right here. I think there used to be a motorcycle repair shop or welding shop or something like that. Yes. So a little bit north of the county's quarry, and there's the Rock Crusher Convenience Center for reference.
Mike, is there room there to just reconfigure this detention pond by making it longer or instead of wider or something?
Yes, sir. I'm thinking it might be a combination of moving the existing septic line over to give it a little more room, or move the pond over, or some kind of combination of the two. So here's the house. Here's the existing shop. The pond's going right there, and it's hard to see on this, but it slopes from the east side of the properties, and it slopes towards Shelbyville Highway. So like I said, it's, you know, I always plan for Murphy's Law. The worst could hap, you know, if it can and will, it usually happens. So it's not, there won't be people living in it, but it could, you know, be an office or something like that. So I just think I could work with the design engineer a little bit, move it over. There's plenty of room, so we just need to put our heads together and maybe find a better location for it. Pull the site plan back up. There's the existing structure. There's the existing house, and the pond is proposed right behind the house.
Mike, does this need to be deferred, or do we, can we approve it subject to your comments?
I think we can approve it subject to the staff, working with the staff. So we'll still have to have a pre-construction meeting, and we won't schedule that until we get all the Ts crossed and Is dotted, everything worked out.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-3021, ground-up foundation repair, and that's with staff comments, more specifically the retention pond. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6BB, 21-3026, Green Ventures has been withdrawn. Item 6BC, 21-3027, Rutherford County Convenience Center, landfill on Landfill Road. Construction of approximately 700 square feet of essential services space, including trash receptacles, compactors, and associated parking areas on 288 acres, Zoned HI located along Landfill Road. Rutherford County is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The county plans to relocate the existing convenience recycling center at the corner of Landfill Road in East Jefferson Pike, Mike's kind of highlighting that on the map, to the county-owned property, which is located further down, Mike's got that highlighted, further down Landfill Road. After looking at the site plan, one of the primary concern, or the primary concern, I should say, we had was with the, not so much the entrance to the property, but the exit. The original exit to the property didn't really tee into the property line at a 90-degree angle, kind of made, when you get to the, back to Landfill Road, kind of made that looking, try to make sure there's no traffic coming from the, I guess, looking to the left, kind of made that a little awkward trying to do that. After speaking with the applicant, well, the design engineer, you see what they kind of did there. Mike kind of just highlighted that. They've kind of took it out just a little bit and then brought it out, brought it into Landfill Road at more of a 90-degree angle, so that way you can really see a lot better what's coming down, I guess, from the west slash south of Landfill Road, and still have pretty good site distance coming from the north. So that's been addressed. Along with this site plan, there are improvements to the intersection at Landfill Road and East Jefferson Pike. We will need to make sure we work with TDOT and the highway department to make those improvements. But beyond that, this plan appears to be in good order, and we'd recommend approval, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
It's already Zoned Heavy Industrial?
That's correct.
Very good. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 21-3027, Rutherford County Convenience Center on Landfill Road. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6C, we have two items submitted for rezoning request. Item 6CA, REZ 21-016, Derek Donegan. This is on the corner of Weekly Lane and Campbell Road. Commission District is 3. County Commissioner is Michael Rather. Size of the site is approximately 5 acres. Tax map is 70. The existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Information provided by the applicant, which has been included with your agenda packets on your iPads, indicates they would like to rezone this property to commercial services for a tree trimming business. Vehicles would be stored on the properties, mulch, wood chips, and some other accessory structures would also be placed on the site. There is not an approved septic sole site according to the applicant, so the applicant is not contemplating any kind of an office at this time. Again, concept plan has been included with your agenda packets, and you can look at that on your iPads. The concept plan does show access to Campbell Road. The number of required parking spots, design, access, et cetera, would be determined by the zoning ordinance should this application be approved. So even if this is approved today, of course, this is just a recommending body, go through the Board of Commissioners. If it's finally rezoned to the commercial, they would have to do an engineered site plan at that time. But since this is just the zoning portion, this is not a planned development, that's not a requirement right now. No traffic study has been performed at this time. We don't anticipate this really being a traffic generating type facility. But if we look at this, should it be approved, and we decide that the traffic study is necessary, we could require that at the site plan stage as well. Properties located in the commercial services district are required to provide a Type 2 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. That would be on two sides, which can consist of the landscape material or a combination of fencing and landscaping. They wouldn't necessarily be required to do the screening along the rights-of-way just on the adjacent properties. The applicant has indicated they would preserve as many existing trees on the property as they could to serve as part of that buffer. That is something that is permitted by our ordinance. Of course, that would have to be shown on a landscape plan, and the performance standards would also have to be adhered to. Staff was neutral on this request. Since there's not an identified sole site, at least at this point, residential use of this property may not be practical. However, the closest non-residential use is located to the north of the property, which is a religious use. The property is still zoned residentially. This would be the first non-residential zoning in the area, so that was one of the big reasons we were neutral on this. We could kind of see both sides of it. But with that, the applicant is present. I know he's got some slides he would like to go through, but for that, we'll be happy to answer any questions of staff.
Any questions for staff at this time?
Mike, can you show out the zoning out in that area, please?
Here's the subject property here at the corner of Campbell and Weekly, and I'll zoom
When we, I sent this request to the town of Smyrna, this is within their urban growth boundary area. They did say that the closest non-residential zoning, at least as far as they're concerned, was at the intersection at Weekly and Couchville Pike. Well, commercial node, excuse me, was at the intersection of Weekly and Couchville Pike, not the actual physically commercially zoned property. But you can see a lot of that area in white, that's all the core property.
It's on the lake.
Mainly residential out there, no commercial?
Right. Like I said, there is a church just to the north, but as far as zoning in and of itself is concerned, Mike's highlighting, I believe that's a office professional zoning right there, that's off on a Couchville Pike.
That's pretty far away.
And there's a commercial services, that property's actually been zoned that way for quite some time. Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff at this time? The applicant available? Please come forward. Name and address. Very good. What you got in mind? You would, face the, thank you.
We want to park tree trimming trucks on the property, like you said, put a fence around the property, lean-to type storage shed, maintaining the tree buffer, just to use it for that, not really selling anything out of the locale or generating traffic, just more of a parking area. The road, Campbell Road, used to go down to a boat dock that the Corps shut down some 15 years ago, and in the time I've owned it since 2007, dumping has been a problem down Campbell Road, and so much so, I got a letter from RS Gas Building in Nashville telling me I had to clean up the property, and I've hauled off several truckloads of people's dump stuff along there. And he actually said, you know, with the other property owners down Campbell permission, we'd put a fence up across the road, which I didn't know when that happened, but it's a rather ugly fence that's been put up across the road halfway of my property. So nothing further down the road is actually used or accessed to my knowledge, and they want to put the, we want to put the access to the parking area on Campbell, not on Weekly. That's about all I have to add. Doug covered the rest of it very well.
You have a presentation?
Did you want to go through your slides?
We could do. Please. Yeah, this is the property that was shown, the property was shown earlier in his presentation. And this is the area that they wanted to fence off primarily in the fatter part of the land, so it's in the middle of it, not, trying to not be as visible to any of the other side, neighboring properties if possible. And this covers just about what I had already said. Want to put a privacy fence up around it, maintain a buffer of trees as possible, pole barn style structure to park under, and yeah, just as I said. And I think the daily presence would help, you know, limit the illegal dumping. Stuff I've already covered, other than, you know, people using it for a four-wheel-drive access area, it's just been an ongoing problem. Oh, there we go. In 2008, when I was going to build my house on it, the reason I originally purchased it, I walked with a soil scientist, and he was supposed to be the best in the area by recommendations of several people. We hit rock three to six inches deep on the entire five acres. There is no possibility of a septic. Back then, the health department wouldn't authorize any alternative systems. Most recently, I spoke with Jimmy Janette and Mandy Bolesman, who told me there are alternate systems available, but you have to have a minimum of 20 inches of soil for any of those alternates. I don't have that. This is just some of the dumping. The couch is out on my property in front of the fence, and the other dumping is beyond the fence. And that's just the letter I got before. That is a picture of the fence that is maybe 100 yards down Campbell Road off of Weekly
Questions?
Donegan, about how many trucks do you plan on parking there?
Three at the moment, ma'am.
So just to clear up a question in my mind, what you using this property for? What is going to be done on the property?
It is to be just a parking area for the tree trimming trucks. A sole proprietor, it's his business. He's not able to park his trucks at his house, so he wants to put them by my property and So would you like to speak to that?
I'm sorry. You need to come up. If you would, let us know who you are for the record, right here.
My understanding is these, these people that are wanting to use the land, I'm sorry, I'm so hoarse, they're in the tree trimming business, they're in the stump grinding business, so when they clear off, they're going to be clearing it off themselves and expanding that to use and just putting the trimmings, the wood chips on the property is what they're planning to do.
Question, Pettis?
Yeah, I know you said there's three trucks now. Are you looking to expand this business at some time?
I don't know what their future intentions would be, but, you know, obviously, that's five acres of land, you know. I don't know how far they'd want to go with it. Right now, they have about three trucks, and whether they grow or don't grow, you know, that's what they've got right now.
Other questions of the applicant?
Just want to be sure that, that I understand what you're saying. Will there be chips and stumps and so forth brought into the property and stored there at any time, or just the parking of the trucks?
It's not my understanding, I mean, they're planning on, the property is currently wooded. There's trees all up and down the property, so in order to clear the place for them to park, they're planning on cutting down some trees and grinding some stumps and bringing in some gravel. I am not, I'm not aware that they're planning on bringing other materials into the property. I don't, I can find out for you, though.
Other questions of the applicant at this time? Craig.
A lot, it's okay? A lot of the tree trimming operations that I know of, they bring the stumps and all back, and then I don't, and then they may chip them, and they may sell it, I don't know. And you really don't know what that's going to be, what's going to happen or not, I don't believe, well, I'm understanding.
No, sir, you're correct.
Other questions of the applicant at this time? Y'all stay close, there may be, okay? This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ 21-016, Derek Donegan. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come forward. If you would, if you would, give your name and address. What's your name? You would, talk into the microphone?
How y'all doing? Well, first of all, we've lived out there since early 80s, and it's a residential area. Where they turn into Campbell Road, right across the street, there's a family with an elderly lady, and then right down to the left is another family with an elderly man. We've had several wrecks in that curve, right in there, there's been terrible wrecks. We're dealing also with 18-wheelers from 840 that try to sneak in Couchville Pike and Weekly Lane, and they're tearing the roads up, and we do not need big trucks in front of our homes, our residential homes. We don't need a bunch of dump trucks grinding. If you look and look on here and see, I have a swimming pool, and it's about less than 300 feet from the line. Now, these people are going to be grinding, bringing in all kind of big whatever. We do not need a bunch of trucks in our residential area. Who knows what it's going to be? He's saying, well, you know, who knows what it's going to be in a year, or three years, or five years. It's only, would be the only commercial in that whole area. And all I say is that I would ask y'all to think, if you own the property beside them, would you want them to come in while your family's swimming, your daughter-in-law and all your friends? And I have a very nice pool, and it's pretty well-used every day by my family who I usually don't see in the winter, you know, those. But anyway, I don't need also the people that would be working there. You know, how long do they stay on there? Am I going to have crews coming in in the morning, crews coming in in the evening, people moving all day around, trucks riding by my house? All I ask is that you think of this as if my place was your place, and how you want me to vote for you and your family. And so I'm just asking, this is a residential area. They say it's no good. They hadn't come over and asked me to buy it, and when they did, they put a price on it like it was Alaskan gold property that doesn't perk. Well, I have a septic tank right next to it in the front corner where that trailer is, and I could cut that off and add that right onto my place, but nobody's never came and asked me. I just don't need a bunch of people right next to my house while my family is outside working and creating dirt, traffic. It's not a good idea at all. There is nobody in anywhere around this area that wants this. And I'm going to kind of speak out like that if I need to get a list and names and addresses. There's nobody who wants a commercial area in our residential. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Name and address, if you would, here. Name and address if you would here.
I've been a resident of Weekly Lane since 1982, 40 years. And I was on Campbell Road when they auctioned all that land off and they told all them people they could never do nothing but have this land for recreation. They were told going in when they auctioned that property off. So, there's, they knew what they were up against and trying to make money and, as my other neighbor just mentioned, is one factor that I think should be considered here, that they knew what they were doing when they bought the property. And another factor is, you know, this Corps of Engineers land all around his place. I'm backed up to Corps, my other neighbor's fixing speakies, backed up to Corps property. And we got, there's wildlife, there's deers and wildlife and that's a factor we should consider. I asked you to consider this evening concerning this property. And as our neighbors also mentioned about the traffic, I've been there 40 years and this is not a place for having any kind of business. And it's not even good sense to put a place where you're going to get, where you're offering, you're going to get hit in a wreck. A person concerned for a real good company wouldn't want to have his company right turn that curve. I can't tell you how many times I've seen wrecks in that road, even people killed right in near that curve. And so, that's three factors right there I asked you to consider and not to mention that, you know, we like quiet and peace in our neighborhood and we've had it for many, many years. And so, I would ask you to consider that, at least these three things as you ponder your decision. Do you have any questions? Merry Christmas and thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Kevin Spencer. I live at 4116 Weekly Lane. I moved there three years ago. I live right next to the gentleman who just got done spoken, who just got done speaking. I moved out there to raise a family, and which I did, and we had a daughter last year. We moved out there for the land. We moved out there to live in a residential area away from commercial businesses, dump trucks, loud noises, banging, you know, the beeping trucks backing up. And I live .3 miles away from the proposed rezoning. As James said, in just the amount of time that I've lived there, I can't even count on my hands and fingers and toes how many wrecks that I have seen at the curve of Campbell Road. Just in the last, which you guys don't have the traffic data because I've seen, you guys only have the traffic data up to 2019 from T-Dot, from Titan. And just in the last two months, we had no power for, I'll almost say at least three hours while Middle Tennessee was out there replacing the pole because somebody came around that corner and knocked it down. On a daily basis, I witness in excess of people coming around that curve because it's one of the only straightaways on Weekly Lane. Mine and James's house is right in front of it, along with several of the other people that are here tonight. We have trucks, semi-trucks going in excess of 60 miles an hour, motorcycles coming up, barreling around that curve in excess of 90 miles an hour. My major concern, too, is if it gets rezoned, what's going to happen in a year or two? Is the property going to be sold to another business? What else could be built on it? Well, we have no idea. Does he already have somebody lined up to buy it and he's trying to rezone it for himself? We don't know. Nobody's going to know that. There's all kinds of backdoor deals that take place just to get something rezoned, not from you guys, but from the people that are requesting to be rezoned. I've seen it and we don't want that. As James said, and I think everybody in our neighborhood agrees, we want peace and quiet. That's why we all live there. And as you guys even said and as the report says, besides the church, that's going to be the only commercial residential zone, or commercial zone there. It's zoned residential for a reason and it was zoned residential for a reason when it was made like that because that, you know, you don't mix the commercial and the residential. I just don't understand, you know, why we need to have a piece of commercial property in the middle of residential area when there's plenty of other plots, plenty of other land all over the city and state. And I also have a concern when you open a business and, like he said, people go down that road and they dump, and that's fine. But now people are going to go down that road and they're going to want to steal whatever kind of equipment that gets down there, you know. They go looking and when they can't find it there, they're going to start coming to our houses and looking because they can't find what they want because they'll already be in the area. So, I'm standing here today and I'm begging you guys to deny this rezoning. This is not good for our area. We all just want to enjoy a good quality of life out there and that's why I chose to live out there and I plan on staying out there for a long time. So, if you guys would think about it, you know, would you want to live next to that as well or either? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request?
My name is Gary Grattan. Excuse me. I live at 4301 Weekly Lane. I'm a neighbor of Kevin and James's. I live on the opposite side of the road, about a stone's throw from the proposed rezoned property. Several things come to mind is the gentleman that owns the property currently bought it in 2008, knowing that it was a single-family residence zoning. He bought it knowing that and to come along now and try to be the only commercial zone property on Weekly Lane just doesn't make any sense at all whatsoever. I mean, I'm not opposed to people parking their vehicles on their property, but commercial zoning, no. The other thing I'd like to bring up is they've talked about mulch. Are you going to run chippers? That's not parking. You were very vague as to how many trucks, three now, maybe more in the future. We won't have any control once this property's been rezoned. Access to Weekly Lane, are you going to just come off of Campbell Road or are you going to try to come out onto Weekly itself? There seems to be some thought that you want to do that as well. I'm not sure, I couldn't see what was proposed. But the thing to bear in mind right now, the council, is that there is no commercial property on Weekly Lane and it's quite a long road. There is none. It's all single-family residents. That's it. The other thing I'd like to bring up is, I don't know if you can bring this up or not, but... Are part of the proposed property?
The corner is actually part of the property. Now, the zone, I mean, quite frankly, even if they did zone it, you're not going to be able to do anything with it.
I understand that, but it's quite, it's quite interesting that on one map, this, I don't know if you can bring it up and show it to the people, that corner right there isn't on the other map, but it is on this one. And that is contiguous, I believe, to 42 acres that has been clear-cut and left that way and they've had problems because it didn't perk. The other thing I'd like to bring up is there are at least three other systems that can be put on a residential lot beside a septic system. There's an above-ground system that can be put on there. I know because I just applied for an application three weeks ago. So, yes, it can be done. So, it can be used as a residential property. It's not, you know, a bad deal, but that's something that should have been checked into when the property was bought. It's that simple. There's a number of people that I know that live down on Campbell Lane that bought those lots for retirement homes. And the fence going across the road, how they ever got that, I don't know, but it's a public road. But they did get the fence across it and it did preclude people dumping and the property has been cleaned up substantially. So, I don't have a problem with the fence being there whatsoever. The only other thing, you know, that I just, if this is at all considered at all, that there should be very heavy limited use, very, very restricted use on this property if it's even considered whatsoever. Do you have any questions with me? Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Anyone else?
My name's Larry Lane and I live at 4585 Weekly Lane. I've been out there about 35 years and it was, I moved out there because it's residential and I want to keep it that way. I oppose any commercial zoning, rezoning at all. And all these other guys have said about anything that I could say, so I just want to let you know I oppose it. And it is a dangerous road. We have many wrecks on it, a lot of people have been killed at that curve. And I think any more trucks going in and out of there just going to make it more dangerous for the traffic, for residential people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Anyone else?
My name's Derek Varner. I'm 4619 Weekly Lane. I just want to get up here and say I oppose this. I've been out there for 21 years. I think my neighbors have put up, you know, what I wanted to say. We all move out there for a purpose, okay? We go out there, there's state park, it's quiet. This residential or commercial property in this area, just, it makes no sense. It's, I think what scares a lot of us, you're opening a can of worms, so we don't know what's going to happen. It doesn't sound like it's very well-planned. And, you know, chippers, shredders, backing horns, I just don't think this is a place for it. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Patrick Campbell. I live at, one of the owners on 4356 Weekly Lane, right across the street. I use both driveways off of Campbell Road, Susie Wood's house. I come out there with trailers quite often from Campbell Road and also from 4356, which is the driveway right across the street from Campbell Road. Six out of 10 times when I come out of there, there's a car just right on me. It's pretty much two blind spot curves from each side. You can go left or right and you're on a blind spot curve. Also, the concern I have, there's a lot of other tracks down that road. If this is zoned commercial, these properties were residential when they were sold at auction. If this is zoned commercial, what keeps the other landowners down Campbell Road doing the same thing and opening that whole road up to commercial use? I really don't want to see that. My great-grandfather lived back there before the lake came in. My grandfather lived there and, you know, Campbell Road turned into a boat ramp and I don't want to see commercial out there for this use at all, you know. It is a quiet neighborhood, I agree with everything's been said, but it's a dangerous area. I couldn't see somebody pulling in and out of there with, you know, logging equipment and stuff, you know, because it's hard for me and a truck and a trailer not to get hit. These things are coming out slow speeds. I just don't see it working out at all. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I'm not going to talk very long, but I bought a place in 1985, the same property that was auctioned off. I'm at 4889 Weekly Lane, I've got 27 acres. It perked, was a perk in sight. And after, I ended up buying the property. And then that same day, they auctioned the property off where they're talking about, except for, I don't believe that five-acre track was in it. I think all of it, they were talking about down around the gas line and around that area. And just like everybody else, I don't think it should be commercial, it should stay residential. And that's pretty much how I feel about it.
My name is Cecil Edwards. I live just down to about 100 yards on Henley Road. I was born and raised out there. My dad owned 200 acres. In 1992, I purchased 12 acres from my dad to build my home out there in residential. Like I say, I've basically lived out there all my life. It will not, it's always been a residential, it's a beautiful place and the last thing we need is to be zoned commercial. I have a piece of, there's a piece of property about five acres right beside my house there on Henley Road. They have tried several times to get that turned to commercial and it's been turned down several times. The last thing we need is a commercial property out there on Weekly Lane because it's been residential, it's a beautiful place and it's no place for commercial property. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Gary Smith. I live at 4850 Weekly Lane. I've been out there since 1959. And I think these guys have pretty much told you how they feel and I feel the same way about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners.
Doug, let me ask a quick question. Craig, let me ask a quick question about that. Is it Campbell Road?
Yes.
Is that a road?
It's a county road. Yes, sir. It's in the county road book.
How can somebody block it off if it's a Campbell?
That's a really good question, that I don't have a good answer to. I have no idea.
Mr. Chairman, based on the feedback that we've heard from the residents, and I was thinking along the same lines in terms of the property, you know, the idea of rezoning should be that that parcel would be appropriate for that use regardless of the industry that was going to be utilizing it that's approved in that category. I don't think we have that here, and so I also feel like it would be spot zoning in order to drop a commercial zoning in such a residential area. I also am very familiar with Weekly Lane, and it is not a safe road, and I would not want to have to encounter larger vehicles on it as well. So for all those reasons, I'll make a motion that we deny.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Item number REZ 21-016, Derek Donegan. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition. Does the motion to deny carries? Let me make a quick announcement. This planning commission is a recommending body. This rezoning request is, will be scheduled to be heard at the January 13 meeting of the Rutherford County Commission in this courtroom at 6:30 p.m. January 13, 6:30. Item 6CB, REZ 21-017, Jeffrey D. Turner. Location is 5871 Franklin Road. Commission district is seven. The county commissioner is Mike Kush. The size of the site is approximately .6 acres. The tax map is 100C, Group A. The existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. The proposed zoning is OP for office professional. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Information provided by the applicant states they would like to rezone this property as stated, Office Professional, to allow for a pest control business. They did attach some additional information for your review, which I put with your agenda packets on your iPads. The applicants in the past rezoned two other properties along Franklin Road back in 2009, which have been under our older zoning code, 3167 and 3185. When we zoned the county back in 2013 with the new zoning ordinance and map, we actually zoned both of those parcels to Office Professional as well. Access would be along Franklin Road. There is a concept plan included with your agenda packets, which does show the existing house being converted into office space with parking in the back. Again, the, similar with the last application, number of required parking spots, design, et cetera, would be determined by the requirements of the zoning ordinance and shown on an engineered site plan. Same comments with the traffic study. If we feel one is warranted, we could require one at the site plan stage. Office Professional is a lighter district than Commercial General, or, sorry, Commercial Services, so it doesn't require a type 2 buffer. It does require a type 1, which can be accomplished, again, using trees or a combination of trees and fence material. And performance standards will also apply to this. With the last application, again, we could see some pluses and minuses to this. The property is located within the general urban character area and is located within, along an urban-style corridor, which both contemplate non-residential uses. Office Professional is more of a limited zone than Commercial Services is, or any of the commercial zones really. Although non-residential zoning is close by, really to the north and, just to the northeast there, you see that property area in green there that Mike's got on the map. That's actually zoned in the city of Murfreesboro. There is a city zoning map in your agenda packets as well. I believe it's Zone Commercial Highway, which is more comparable to our Commercial General, our heavier commercial classification. This would be the first of its kind along that block, but you can see that there is commercial zoning in very close proximity to that. Franklin Road, as you can see, will also be widened to a five-lane road at some point in the future. I believe that, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's underdesigned right now through the state. It's a T-dot project, but that's a long process, as, as we know, when it comes to road widening. So with that, didn't really, we received one, I received one phone call about this application. That was earlier today. The applicant owned some property just down from this parcel of land, was in support of the application, hadn't received any other phone calls about this. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff? There any, may have mentioned it, but I didn't catch it. Is there any plan for that type of business that's going in there?
Yeah, he wants to do a pest control type business.
Yes, right. Thank you. Very good. Any other questions for staff?
Doug, do you know whether there'd be a lot of, excuse me, a lot of people coming in and out of this? Will there be a lot of traffic added to this?
It would mostly be probably employees. It would be their base of operations. You know, I would imagine employees would come, they'd pick up their trucks, do their routes for the day, and then come back. I doubt you'd see just a whole lot of customer traffic in and out. I know that the pest control company we use personally, I mean, pretty much everything's online. You know, you can call them, there's someone there to answer the phone, but I've yet, I've never one step foot in their, in their office that I can remember.
Other questions? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open for REZ 21-017, Jeffrey D. Hunter. Is the applicant available? Would you please come forward?
Good. How are you?
Pretty good.
Jeff Turner, 3559 Coleman Hill Road, Rockville.
What's your plan?
Like Doug was saying, I'm working with All-American Pest Control out of Donalds in Tennessee. It's a family-owned business, third or fourth generation, and they want a Murfreesboro address. And we've done this up the road with the Lee Company and Northwest Exterminators. We brought them out of Georgia, and they have an office right up near Franklin Heights. And I would like to duplicate that at this, this location. The, the employees drive the trucks home. They would occasionally come by and pick up brochures and some supplies, but really, it's, it's a, it's an address for them to put them on the map in Rutherford County and Murfreesboro. There might be some team meetings occasionally, but it's not a, not a, like one of the gentlemen was saying, it's not a place for customers. It's not going to be a lot of customer traffic at all. I don't expect any. There's somebody may stop by to pay a bill.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone here wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Doug, it says in our packet that Commissioner Kush, and he said he spoke to Commissioner Gooch. Is that his letter? He says he spoke, is this in Mike's?
Okay. I haven't spoke to Commissioner Kush about it. If he has or not, I mean, I'd take him as, as word.
I mean, he says in his letter, though, it says he spoke to Commissioner Gooch. Is it Commissioner Gooch's district or?
I think, actually, I think you said, but I called you and told you it was actually Kush's, or I emailed you, didn't I? Yeah, come on, come back, come back, Doug. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's right across the street. I think is what happened. I caught that as I was working on staff. Then I contacted you.
Yes, I talked to Trey Gooch, and we were, we thought it was his. And then Doug told me it was Mike Kush. And I've left him two very long voicemails in the last couple of weeks and have not been able to correspond with him personally. I was very detailed, and I tried to call several, if not all of you folks that I could. So.
Doug, you said you were neutral. I mean...
Well, you know, if you're comparing this, let's say, to the one we just looked at, I mean, this has, in my mind at least, this probably has more reasons going for it than the last one did. I mean, it's on a road. We know it's going to be widened to five lanes. It's very close to commercial-y zone property, even though it's in the city. I mean, the applicant does have a track record with those other properties, and, I mean, quite frankly, he hasn't had any complaints about those. So he's done what he said. Now, this, of course, he had, he developed those under different zoning codes, so this would be a little different, but Office Professional also is a, it's a more restricted zone. There's fewer uses that you could do here. So I'm more comfortable with that than I would be if it were just straight commercial.
I'm quite familiar with this area, just living like two blocks from there. I drive past it almost every day. And the city is expanding quickly, and of course, they are widening 96 there. All of that intersection, all of that area is going commercial and up and down Veterans. And I think that that's the general plan that the city has in mind for that. A lot of those little homes are, are, you know, I say older, probably 70s and 80s, which is old for that neighborhood. Many of those up and down that stretch are, are going commercial. I believe, for somewhere, for some reason, it sticks in my mind that directly across the street on that last parcel has just been rezoned for perhaps, or a plan for some multi-use and some townhouses or, or something going on over there. So, and of course, you know, the city's talking about that big parcel down the street to do a school and a new park. And the Kroger is diagonally across the street. There's an awful lot going on there. If it's not commercial now, it's going to be commercial in the near future, the entire area. I see many of those homes getting torn down. The one just diagonally across the intersection there recently got torn down. That home's been there a long time, but that's kind of the general direction that this area is going. So I, I could support it, but I want to hear, you know, the opinions of others in here.
Doug, did you say you did, did you have any opposition or did you?
I didn't receive. The only call I received was the person who was in support of it. I didn't receive any opposition on this one.
I have a little heartburn simply because it looks like that whole area, that whole block there is residential, but Jim helped clear my mind up a little bit because of that. And being familiar with, with that area, I can see where that would happen. I mean, there's, there's a lot. You can just see Kroger right across the road and that, that old farm that's over there. I'm not sure what will happen to it eventually, but I can kind of see it developing from a commercial development too. So Jim's comments kind of eased my mind a lot on, on that request.
Mr. Chairman, a lot of that across the road has done that. If you'll go all the way down to Veterans Parkway there, right in the corner, I guess five houses down from this one. I notice every time I make a turn there, there's a truck sitting there with advertisement on it, because whoever lives there is advertising in their front yard for whatever they do already. So that's how close it is, I guess, is what you're saying. Commercial is happening right there. So I, I think pretty much what Jim has said there, that that's what's happening there. I know it started down Franklin Road many years ago. You know, we started having a dentist in there, and then something else in all those residential areas there. Now there's a funeral home there, I believe, and you come on down. So I'd say this right here is getting ready to have some of the same things.
Have a motion and a second to approve with any staff comments that were made? Very good. Once again, a motion and a second to approve REZ 21-017 for Jeffrey D. Hunter. Any other questions or comments? Turner, I'm sorry. A little bit of dementia sitting in. I apologize. Once again, a motion and a second with staff comments to approve REZ 21-017 for Mr. Turner. Other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Other business, staff reports. Doug?
Yes, sir. Just one staff report. It's that time of year, it's hard to believe it's that time of year, where we appoint our nominating committee to choose our chair and vice chair for calendar year 2020. We appoint the committee today, and they will make their recommendations at the meeting, the second, the fourth Monday meeting in January. So with that, after much deliberation, Jeff and I discussed, we asked Jim, Chip, and Charlotte to be on this committee. They have all agreed to put in the painstaking work that will be required to make that decision at the fourth Monday meeting in January. So we'll just need a motion to that effect to...
Motion to approve the nominating committee? And a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Doug?
That's it. Other than to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, thankful for every one of you that are here and the work you put into this. You make this a very, it's a challenging job, but you all make it enjoyable. So I just want to speak on my behalf. I know I speak for staff when I say that as well. So thank you all very much.
Our next meeting is scheduled for January the 10th. It'll be a 6:00 p.m. meeting here. And let me just say, kind of an opposite of that, I do appreciate each and every one of you. We've been on this, Craig, we've been on this commission for maybe too many years, but we've been on this commission for a long, long time, and the commission has gotten better and better and better. And you guys are well-versed, and I'm so proud to call you not only associates but friends, and I appreciate you. The other side of that is the staff and how our staff has grown and the job that they do. And sometimes it's a tough job because they're catching flack from everywhere. Sometimes nobody's happy with the decision that we make, and staff backs us up all the time. So Doug, Mike, Gail, and your staff, we appreciate everything that, that you do in making our job a lot easier. So with that, once again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January.